You're going to register for it.
You missed another fun meeting.
I was going to ask you about that.
Yeah, we're.
I'm sorry.
We're ready.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Friday, March 7th, 2025, uh, commission meeting of Otero County. I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Wait a minute. There I go.
Okay, that's better. Like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Marquardt.
Here.
Commissioner Matherly.
Here.
Commissioner Brela.
Here.
And Commissioner Brela is going to lead us in the invitation.
President Abraham Lincoln, once said to predict the future, you must make it. Father, I ask you to open our eyes to see your will, open our ears to hear your direction, open our mouths to ask the right questions, and open our hearts and minds to make the right decisions to move our county to a better place. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zia symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our sheriff's office report.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Black, Otero County Sheriff. For February, we had 2,601 calls for service, we had 523 investigative reports, 62 traffic crash investigations, 58 arrests, we had three warrants that were served, issued 111 traffic citations, served 332 subpoenas for the courts, assisted Tularosa with 63 calls for service, Clowdrop 46 calls for service, and in Alamo responded to 419 calls for service. In our narcotics division, we had eight search warrants, we had 13 arrests, one agency assist, generated 45 case reports, we had $5,396 in cash seized, five vehicles seized, five firearms seized, three fugitive apprehensions, we had seven jail possession cases.
Wow.
We had 173.4 grams of meth that was seized, 217 grams of heroin, 156 prescription pills, 2.74 grams of cocaine, 40.97 grams of fentanyl powder, and 1,680 fentanyl pills, held about $79,000 worth of illegal narcotics seized. In our special events, public relations, it was kind of slow in February, we didn't have any, kind of gave us a break for just a bit to get some other stuff done. But March is already looking busy, there'll be some more. In our training section, most of the deputies have completed several, the mandated trainings is done on the local GovU training site, we've been assigning those every three weeks, so it gives them time to go online and do their training and stuff, so. And we just completed some promotional testing for sergeants and lieutenants.
Did you say emotional?
Pro-promotional.
Okay.
Now that'll come later. And as a result of that, we have three lieutenants, or three sergeants that will be promoted to lieutenants, and that is pending a request that you'll see later on for a position reclassification and stuff, so I'm looking forward to get that done, and I need those guys in there to help out. Inter-manning Deputy Lopez, still in the academy, he's on week six in Hobbs, we have Oscar Velasquez, was hired, is currently going through his pre-certification by waiver training, he'll go to cert by waiver in April, he's a certified, but he'll have to do the cert by waiver.
Does he come over from Eddie?
No, actually, he's coming to us from El Paso. We got Andres Pentur and Ulysses Gutierrez, they both start on the 17th of March, and with these three guys right here, I'm fully staffed at 63 positions.
Yay, that's awesome.
It's amazing what we can get done a lot of times when you've got people riding the seats in those cars, so. I do anticipate a retirement coming up in about a month, as well as a deputy that is, he's got some, some issues back, back home in the Carolinas, medical issues with, with family members and stuff, so he's let us know that he'll probably be heading back to the Carolinas, and we've got, to be ready for this, we've got a physical fitness standard coming up, so we're, we're not going to slow down, we'll, we'll keep testing them, and hopefully we'll have two in the, in line to replace, fill these two positions as soon as they become empty. In our vehicle situation, we got our last two Tahos, they are just about done, they've got some equipment that one of the manufacturers has to come down and help with some programming on, so hopefully the week of the 17th, we'll get those and put them in rotation, as soon as those are done, then I have the three ACO trucks that we have received, we've got them at the office, and we'll start putting the equipment and stuff in those and get our, get our guys in some newer trucks for ACOs. I do have five additional Tahos from the Capital Outlay, they were supposed to be here in March, I talked to them, and now it's May, so we'll get those in May, and get those to the upfitter and get them started. In February, also attended the Otero County Days in Santa Fe, that was a really good event, it was good because we got to visit with all legislators up there, and just, not just in a, a work situation, you know, we got to talk with each one of them, and there's a lot of bills and stuff we discussed, you know, wanted opinions from law enforcement and stuff on the bills and stuff, so that was a good deal. In February, I was also invited and attended Law Enforcement Appreciation Days at the Roundhouse, and a special thank you goes out to Representatives Vincent Block and Silva for the invitation and the kind words they spoke about law enforcement, so that is all I got. Stand for any questions?
On those cases coming into the jail, there were seven of them, how are they getting that in?
I don't know, when I did my report last night, I realized that that had the, the seven jail cases.
If they're coming in through the mail, is there any way you can just, can it be required that they just get emails rather than physical letters, or is there some law against that?
And actually, I thought they had it set up to work.
We get, they get digital mail, it's all done through a company out of Texas, and they get them on their iPads.
Yeah, they don't actually get mail directly to them.
I was actually wondering, because we are now using the x-ray machine, we're catching more.
It's very, very possible, and that, that I will.
I'm hoping that's what it is.
I will get with my narcotics commander and find out what, what was going on, did that surprise me when I saw that?
Yeah.
But I don't have an answer for you right now, but I can find out, and I'll shoot each one of your email that you know when I find out.
And Nina's not here, and I'll ask her when she comes in, but does everybody go through? Because I mean, to me, the employee, everybody that watches.
My understanding, everybody goes through it.
Hand up.
Every, every inmate that comes through goes through it, and if they leave for medical, they go through it again, the employees cannot go through every day because of the radiation limits, it would, it would expose them to too much, so they can do it occasionally, randomly, they can scan every bag they bring in, so yeah, with the employees, we can't scan them every day.
You got, you got 250 exposures a year is like the cap, and so, you know, if they work even close to a full year, we'd be exceeding that, so we talked about doing randomized scans, that way it, you know, keeps everyone on their toes and doing what they're supposed to. We have some visitors that are frequent flyers at the detention center, and so we've got to watch out for them and how much radiation they're getting a year.
Wow. I didn't know we needed a dog. Let him sniff it out, there's no radiation involved, I still think that's a good idea.
That poor dog.
So David, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The, after sitting in that meeting yesterday, what, what are we going to do with Tulie? You already, sounds like you're creating four people to stay out there all the time or around that area.
Well, and I'll be honest, I, I don't have the manning for that, to assign somebody just to Tularosa, I mean, I would have to hire more people to do that, to get somebody fully, you know, just staying there day and night, you know, so basically, we're, we're still responding to emergency calls, some of the other stuff, barking dogs and stuff like that, I mean, they hold those till they get an officer back, and that officer goes, we're just responding to the emergency calls, but again, that, 63 calls over there.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, like we talked about kind of in the meeting, is we probably need to sit down and have a good, hard discussion about what's going on up there, and what it's, they're doing to us, how we can still help, but we've got to try to help them, you know, and I'll tell you, Clowdrop's same way, you know, they got two guys up there right now that, you know, we take the majority of the calls in Clowdrop now.
And, and I can understand that a little bit more because you guys are scattered out all over the mountain up there, and, but after listening, and then what you said on, you know, what their budget is and everything, if, if they're having problems, they could turn loose a little of that, try to help the assistance that everybody's trying to give them, so that's my thing, if they're just trying to get along on a freeload deal, maybe that's not the right word to, to use it, but, to say, but, but need, they need to be accountable for some of that, too.
And I think we've, we've, we've kind of, we've gone quite a while in doing this, you know, hoping that their numbers and stuff would improve, they get some more guys and stuff up there, it just doesn't seem to be happening, you know, I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail on their manning and stuff, but, no, I think it might be time that we, we sit down with the, with the mayor and stuff, and just have a good, hard discussion about, you know, what, what they're, what's going on, what they need, so.
Yeah, and it's not just you, your department, it's the other sources, too.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, we need to do something.
David asked the same question I was going to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I mean, how are you guys today?
Good morning, it's Friday, so there's that.
It is Friday. So for the 911 Center for February, we had our lower numbers for the month, 2,100 911s, a little over 1,000 officer lines, and 6,700 admin lines, with a total of 9,957 lines into the 911 Center. We had an average answer time percentage of 95.53 percent, with an NFPA standard of 99.04 percent, which went up from last month.
Was that good or bad?
Very good.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought I was tracking that.
No, that, that, that was really good. We did have a CPR save, and we recognized one of our dispatchers for that, within the city limits, 33-year-old female, pregnant, collapsed, they did revive her on scene based off of the CPR instructions over the phone, and last time I heard, she is still breathing and alive in, in the hospital. Our carbine go-live date, which is our new call handling system, is projected to be set at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday of next week, so we will put out messages for that, there should no, there should not be any type of interruption in the 911 system or calling into the 911 Center at all. And then last thing I have is the Senate Bill 173, which is the reclassification for dispatchers as first responders, that is been approved by the first committee, now it's sitting at Finance Committee waiting for schedule, so we believe we have a good fight, and hopefully that gets passed for our dispatchers.
Good.
Other than that, I stand for questions.
I don't know. I don't think I have anything either, do you?
No.
Awesome, wow.
Thank you.
That was quick.
Morning Commissioners, Matt Clark, Emergency Services.
Morning. So thankful Clowdrop didn't burn down last night.
Very lucky.
Yes, thank you, and, and everybody that was fighting, um, thank you.
Yeah, I will pass that on to them.
Please do.
They, they did a phenomenal job, we've had a couple in the mountains, close calls over the last couple of weeks that could have been very, very, very disastrous, but leading into that, I have a meeting with Forest Service in about an hour and a half, they're looking at their health of the overall Lincoln National Cross, Eddie Chavez, Otero, Lincoln Counties, and they're probably looking at stage one restrictions coming up next week, and we will follow along with that.
And stage one is everything, no campfires, no smoking?
No, it's, it's not quite as restrictive, and I'll have more information on that for you, and then that'll go on to the public press releases.
When we go into fire restrictions, is there any way we could do it by area so that we don't have to cancel the fireworks show?
That's on my radar, as far as the fireworks go. We are going to do entire county because we are just as dry as they are in the mountains, we're getting the weather events down here, same as they are in the mountains, and the fire is going to do the same thing down here, short of early monsoons, I, I, I don't know what's going to happen, but if we don't get some precipitation down here, I, I just cannot layer it the way we used to do it.
And I know that they always have all the fire trucks and everything around the Space Hall of Fame in preparation of, and I definitely don't want to cause a fire, but a lot of people are reaching out to make sure that the fireworks show wasn't canceled, I don't know how to.
The, the city is already in discussions with that, I had a meeting with Chief Ramirez the other day, they have a couple different options that they're exploring in the event of not having fireworks, there are even, in the plans for it, so.
Are they looking at the laser show?
Laser show, drone show, and I, I think it's going to take serious consideration this year, just based off of how dry we are.
We went to Texas Tech to a football game the other day, and they did the drones, and it was amazing, and it was really cool.
Yeah, technology has really improved a lot over what we can do, so we'll see. P&amp;M announced that they were doing the public safety shutdown of 50,000 consumers in Bernalillo, Santa Fe, I think Valencia County, Sandoval Counties, they actually never pulled the trigger, but they had, getting the word out that it could happen. Same thing can happen down here for any of the P&amp;M services, if we get those high winds, they are serious about not wanting to be the next California, so they're going to be shutting power off. As it happens, they're, they're supposed to be getting with us that we have as much advanced warning as we can to people, but with that, prepare your homes, if you are on oxygen, if you need to be hooked up to electricity, get a generator. We, we started putting that word out on social media the other day, I know the co-op has no intention of it happening, but if they're getting their power from P&amp;M, and that's the leg that P&amp;M shut off, you know.
I think the Lincoln County schools were dismissed at noon yesterday in, in, to, in apprehension that the electricity was going to shut up.
A lot of the schools up north, I was in Albuquerque, training session yesterday, and we lost half the class to go to work, anticipation of the power shutdown, but they were doing a lot of no schools, distance learning, leaving early, so unfortunately, it's, it's where we're living today, so as more stuff comes out, we'll be getting the word out the best we can to everyone. The volunteers responded to 150 calls last, last month, 16 of them were fires, 112 EMS calls, they did, what was that, we had three structure fires last month, so all of those are extreme concern because most of them were in the mountains, and the urban interface is, is prime, so. Code enforcement did, they opened up 18 cases, they have two buildings that were notified for teardown, that will happen this month, that we'll get rid of those, we completed 27 follow-ups, and closed nine cases, and did seven fire investigations. Mike Court is still an active warrant on the individual, Tractor Road, the guy is continuing to put up his fence so that it meets the organs where we can't see in. 53 Almatero went to court, the judge extended it for 30 days, because he wanted legal representation, we objected, but the judge still said he's giving them 30 days, so we're continually monitoring that one. First Street, there was no improvement, even with the dumpsters down there, we did reopen that case, and getting that one ready, so we filed that one in court. We're intending to keep Otero Beautiful meetings every month, we did move that dumpster from Bolz Acres down to Dog Canyon, and we've got two and a half tons of trash out of that, I'm getting ready to move that to either Almwest or Donegan, to start hopefully cleaning up one of those areas. And that is all I have.
Hello, did we find Keep Otero Beautiful some money?
Yes, I am going to take it out of one of my line items, a couple of thousand dollars, just so they have some stuff for Earth Day until you approve it in the budget.
Rodney did email me about that, and I thought you were working on it, but I'm.
Yeah, I, I told Celia when she was, I overheard Celia talking to him, and I interrupted and said, I'll give you some money.
Okay, good.
So, I'm just waiting for them to bring me some quotes, so I can put a PO in and get that started.
Okay.
And Tommy called me during the meeting, too, and asked me for so many, and I gave him a thousand of my junior money, too, so if you can, if you want to use it, or, I've never used it before.
Junior money?
Whatever.
Oh, the discretionary?
Discretionary.
The board has to vote to use discretionary money because it belongs to all three of you.
Oh, okay. I thought it was each one of us had it.
No, no, it's for all three of you.
Okay.
But no, I, I've got them covered.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for doing that. Okay, anything else?
The one in La Luz, and I can't remember the name of the street, there were the address five and seven, I know you replied on it, it's one that we've complained about before, they're using a trailer for their trash, and now the trailer's accumulated, and they're getting rats, do you know the status on that one?
I sent codes out on it, but I don't, I'll, I'll shoot you an email with that.
Okay, and then I'm getting a lot of compliments about the cleanup in Donegan, so thank you for that. And how many volunteers do we recruit?
I did not get the numbers, were not given to me.
I know we recruited some, so good job.
We have, we have recruited a few more, so it's ongoing, so.
Good.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right, thanks, Nat.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, you shaved.
Yeah, it warmed up.
Look at that baby face.
Yeah, okay.
Sweet, sweet baby.
Good morning Commissioners, Department of Water, Water, and Air.
Oh, you found some glasses.
Hmm?
You found some glasses.
I stole a pair from Cassie. So for last month, we actually started hauling rock down to Chaparral for this year's chips seal season, we're waiting on one more certification from VLM, so we're good on cap, we had a good meeting with them last month. We had a good meeting with them last month for the two borrow pits down off the Mesa. Paperwork's been submitted to reestablish those pits and to get that one certification for Gato Mountain Road. General maintenance, we finished cleaning up Gardner down there off of Riada. We hauled out of the pit for Timberon. We've got an agreement with the water department up there, and we've got a pretty good pit and a pretty good stockpile of material up there now to cap the roads with. We did patching in the Tularosa and the Alamo West area, brush trimming in Tularosa, around Tularosa. We had three snow events last month that we didn't get much moisture out of, but just enough to send the trucks up to salt, and we're preparing the 26 fiscal year chip seal.
You're not going to say where Chip Seal is?
Nope. The other two will be mad at me. So the way it fell this year in the funding that we got, we're doing six miles in Chip Seal and Chaparral this year, and then all of Oro Vista, and then Gato Mountain Road.
That's a bunch.
Yeah, it's a total of 22 miles this year.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Good morning Commissioners, Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
We've had a pretty busy month.
Does your hat say OSHA?
OSHA Violator.
Oh, I was going to say, what are you doing? I like the violator part. I can't read it from here.
May not be the best work hat. Not my line of work.
It's his day off.
Yeah, that's true. Anyway, it's Friday. You're good.
The road shop building, we're just doing some final finishes on that. Eric's hoping to be moved in out there at the end of the month, so that's good to have that one almost complete. Hyroll Volunteer Fire Department expansion, we only have one item left, bay heaters, which we're getting those installed. Everything else is good to go on that one. The James Canyon Volunteer Fire Department, pump houses and tank tie-ins that we're doing, we're still struggling with some permitting and getting our engineering back. We've reached out several different engineers, and every time they promise us a quick turnaround, it's two or three weeks and still nothing, so kind of held at their mercy, but still pushing that one along. The Chin's roof replacement, we had to send that in back to be reauthorized to amend some law language in that, so as soon as we get those signed agreements back, we assume probably about August sometime, we'll be able to finally get that project going. But we had to get it reauthorized to bring in and encompass everything that needed to be completed on there. Some stuff was left out of the actual language. They were not willing to give an inch on that, so...
You got a disaster on your hands when you got that job to take that over.
I've got some strong feelings about that building. It's almost done. Flickinger Center Brick veneer, we are... We did a structural study on that. There's some issues on the backside. So we did receive a proposal to go through and do the engineering on that. Nobody was willing to entertain even touching that or attempting to repair it without some kind of engineering involved with it, so as soon as that's all completed, we'll be able to price that out and try to get that fixed. It's kind of a big one that's really hazard back there, so...
When birds fly in through the back wall, it's not a good sign.
Well, every time you hear one of these sonic booms, I kind of cringe.
It's going to be the one that gets it.
The detention center wireless access points, the electrical contractor's going to start in there on Monday running all the cabling for all those access points. The tower company was out there this week dodging between windstorms, trying to get the new towers up for the air fiber shot over to the EOC. We'll be wrapping that up this weekend. They're going to opt to try to get out there and finish that up while we have a few good days of weather. This time of year is a little tough for tower work, but we're going to work right through it. Alamo West Fire and Rescue, we've ordered their two water storage tanks that was on a fire grant, and I'm currently pricing the foundations and concrete work for those. Along with Bowls Acres, we ordered a fire water storage tank for them, and we'll be pricing out the foundation for that one as well to get these departments some better water storage. The Otero County Prison, the roof replacement has kind of been slowed down again this week because of the high winds. It's hard to put roofs on, but they have about half of the re-roof finished, and we're looking to, within the next two weeks, be complete with that warranty block work that they have done out there. Otero County Courthouse, that'll be addressed this afternoon in the special meeting, so excited to keep that process going and keep it going on schedule. That's kind of a really important one to hold schedules on, so appreciate you guys agreeing to a special meeting. That's... That keeps us on track.
Trent, real quick on the courthouse deal, Gaines was on the... The people from the blind school that they just did a job down there for were very unhappy with them. Do we get any kind of performance reports from anybody whenever we do their evaluation and stuff?
Yes, within their proposals that the committee reviewed, there's a lot, lot of information in there, past performances, even down to recommendation letters and experience performances, and there's a lot, lot of information that was reviewed with all of that. In some cases like that, you... I've rarely ever heard of a contractor that didn't come across somebody that didn't like them.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, you're going to win some, you're going to lose some, but those evaluations, it was quite the process, and a lot of determinations in there, and a lot of it came down to the interviews and actually speaking to the companies. You can put anything on paper. It's answering the hard questions in person that make it a little bit harder to fabricate. Then the Twin Forks and Bent flood improvements, we've got the task orders signed for those, and they're starting in on the initial design for both of those. Tom had a site meeting up at Twin Forks with the engineers this week and took them around, showing them some of the most concerning areas that we want to address. We're going to move forward with trying to get that done. Along with that, in Nogal Canyon, we're moving forward with replacing some culverts up there that was... had issues, and so through CES contract with Mesa Verde, we're going to be addressing that, and they'll be starting this next week on replacing them, so... Railroad Bridge, again, we have a task order, and we're working to get the PO to start the design as well on that bridge for Tularosa. With that, I'm standing for questions.
I'm busy. I don't think I have anything. You answered mine about the flick. I was going to ask about that, so I already answered that. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioners, Ms. Isler's out on medical leave. She will not be here today.
Okay, all right. And I don't think I have anybody here from the Forest Service either. It doesn't look like it. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda items, and we're going to pull item 10. Anybody have anything for any of the others?
No.
Okay, all right. Number one, request approval of accounts payable bills list BL 32, 33, 34. Number two, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims from March 2025. Number three, request approval of resolution number 03-07-25/113-57, budget adjustments March 2025. Request, number four, request approval of resolution number 03-07-25/113-58, property lease management agreement with Chin's. Number five, request approval of resolution 03-07-25/113-59, property lease management agreement with Otero Arts. Number six, request approval of resolution number 03-07-25/113-60, a resolution in support of broadband deployment, including a support letter. Number seven, request approval of a memorandum of understanding between Sunland Park Police Department and Otero County for FY '24, Operation Stone Garden, in the amount of $70,000. Number eight, request approval of financial reports for the quarter ending September 30th, 2024. Number nine, requesting approval for Otero County to act as a fiscal agent for Sacramento Mountain Senior Services for their legislative capital outlay request for the purchase of four vehicles in the amount of $200,000. Want to make a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you have any unscheduled?
Yeah.
No? All right, moving on to new business. We're cooking with gas. It's 9:36. Okay, sprinkling some ondoli on it today. Okay, number 12. Otero County Assessor James Bowman will update the Board of County Commissioners on the 2024 property value and statistic reports and the legislative changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, James Bowman, Otero County Assessor.
Good morning.
It's Friday, that's why everybody's, you know, this is just getting moving.
With all this stuff that's going on with the assessor's office, I don't envy your job right now.
Yes, it's fun. Yeah, so basically just here to update, you know, as far as what we saw as far as growth and in the county for the calendar year of 2025. As you see on the reports I just handed you, we did see a net new value of $78,133,138, an amount of new value that's being added to the county, that's added to the tax rolls. This basically brings a taxable new value of $26,44,612, which is about 33% of the new value that we will tax. We saw, we did see a slowdown in residential and commercial vacant sales this year. We're really thinking that, you know, a lot of that's attributed to the higher interest rates and things like that that you see in the market these days. We are seeing a huge increase in mobile home sales, especially out in Chaparral. It just continues to grow and grow and grow, which we don't see it slowing down. They are in their final stages of their completion of the new all subsets that's going out there, so that's going to be something that we see is going to contribute to their growth even more. So, yeah, we're just expecting Chaparral to just keep on growing right now, so we don't see that slowing down at all. We did have an increase in new permits from 2024 to 2023, and about 252 more permits than we saw the previous year. Again, that's, that's, that can be anything from solar panels being installed to, you know, new residences or just new construction, things like that, people adding a detached garage or things like that to their property. Permits kind of stay consistent every year because, again, re-roofs, all those things. Anytime, like I explained to a lot of people, anytime someone pulls a permit with a contractor, the contractors have to pull a permit with the state, and once that happens, we get word of it in our office, and then, you know, we deploy our appraisers to the various areas to go check and see what's being done. So permits, year to year, kind of stay continuously growing, kind of like Chaparral's growing. So, like, well, we always see a lot of permits. It was just the sales in residential and stuff like that that we saw this year that were significantly lower from what we saw the previous couple of years. If you go to the back, the last page kind of gives you a breakdown of just kind of exactly, like, you can see where the number of cells were within the county. Again, just to remind you, these are just the sales. Doesn't, we don't, we won't include the permits in this, but we could always give a list of that too. But again, a lot of the permit work, new mobile homes and things like that, a lot of that was out in Chaparral this past year, so we are seeing obviously just significant growth over there. I also wanted to attach the changes to veterans exemptions. This is one of the things right now that we, as the assessors affiliate throughout the state, we've been meeting on pretty much a lot of stuff that's going through legislation right now. There's a lot of changes that are kind of on the docket right now. One of the big ones for us right now is House Bill 47, which was passed in the House as of yesterday, and now it's waiting on Senate approval. Basically, like on the second page that I gave you guys, this is basically talking about the changes from veterans exemptions going from $4,000 to $10,000, beginning in 2026. This is going to be, this is going to be an interesting thing that's going to affect the county significantly, I believe. We are the third largest county when it comes to having amount of veterans in the state, and that's just including the ones that we know about. Like, we don't really know, there's some people that aren't aware that they get exemptions and things like that as far as veterans, but we also have to account for, there's a lot of veterans that aren't property owners as well. So, yeah, this is going to be an interesting thing. I do anticipate it getting approved. I know it was voted on by the, by the public, and it was passed through the votes, and now it's just, you know, going through legislation and everything, and I honestly, we're all anticipating that it's going to happen. We're just kind of trying to prepare ourselves for when it takes effect.
Are you talking about, you think it's going to pass with the equitable disclosure?
No, equitable disclosure is a different thing. That one, we're not sure about. I honestly can't really speak on that. It's, that's one that they're fighting for. Whether or not that's going to pass, that's a completely different thing. Like, that's one of the-
Which one are you talking about?
This is, the House Bill 47 is for the veterans exemptions.
So to go to changing the amounts from four to 10, you're thinking they're going to approve?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're definitely anticipating that that's going to get approved.
There was another one on, oh, there was another bill that would, that they don't let people just file any, like, come in in the middle of the year and say, "I want to claim my tax." They have to go by tax year. How is that one looking?
Right.
That would be a go-go, but that passes.
Yeah, that one, I, again, I'm not sure. There's a lot of stuff that's kind of like being, there's so many of them that they're going through right now for this, that affects the assessors alone. That one, we're not really sure where that one's landing right now. I kind of don't think that one's going to get passed, only because it does make it more of a burden on not only our office, but also like the treasurer's office whenever-
Well, this one you want to pass.
Well, yes.
It's going to say they can't do that.
Yes, no, yes, 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 and exactly, but what I was saying is, like, we don't want to have to go back and always be like, "Oh, we have to correct this for them," so then the treasurer's office has to, like, maybe start issuing refunds and stuff, so, yes, we want this to basically hold. I do think, sorry, I do think this one will probably hold strong, but we haven't heard much about that yet still too. So, but just, I just want to basically make people aware and, you know, help you guys be aware that if with this, the veterans exemption passing, it's going to, it's going to result in quite a bit of tax revenue that's going to be lost in the county. Yeah, and then the next one that's, that they're looking into is also the disabled veterans. Right now, we offer to 100%, but it looks like more likely, again, it's going to pass, that it's going to be based off of percentage, so you have 30% disability, you can get 30% tax exemptions on your property as well. Again, these things that, I mean, I'm all for supporting veterans. I think that it's great. It's just, you know, we have a significant thing that it could actually affect us. You know, for us, a lot of times what we deal with is, you know, property values go up, which is actually, a lot of people kind of see it as like a bad thing because they're like, "Oh, well, value's going up. That means my house is going up," which it's actually, it works in the reverse too, though. Like, as values go up, tax rates can go down. As values don't go up, tax rates go up because they have to compensate for that. We are, we are anticipating that tax rates could possibly go up quite a bit if, if and when this exemption does pass. So, again, I like to say, you know, it's not much that we ourselves can do about it, but what we are going to make sure that we're doing is, I already have a maintenance project scheduled for my appraisers. We usually try doing it during the time that we send out notice of values because that's when we have a lot of people come in and ask questions about the evaluations and things like that. I'm planning on doing a maintenance project around that time to help us make sure that we understand how much value we have on properties that are solely owned by veterans and things like that, because then it also helps us understand, like, what is being exempted. So my office does a pretty good job of staying on top of, you know, properties year in, year out. I will be honest, like, there's no way that we can do every single property every single year. We don't have the manpower for that, but we stay on top of it as best we can, but I- but I do see the need for us to kind of look at maintenance for certain specific areas and with the veterans things getting ready to happen, I do think that it's important for us to make sure that we have everything as accurate as we possibly can have it, so. We are gonna be working with, uh, Mr. David Henley, who helps run the veteran services here in Almagordo, uh, we'll be having an event with him, uh, I wanna say in a couple of weeks actually, where he has people come in and, you know, veterans that, you know, need to get their stuff filed and everything with the state, that he can do it for them and help them get it done same day, so they don't have to send everything off to the state and everything like that, he can get things approved. So we will be doing that again, we've done that the past two years now, and it's worked out pretty well. I think the veterans that do come through, they appreciate it because it keeps them from having to jump through different hoops to get their, um, to get their paperwork to submit to our office and things like that, so we will be doing that here pretty soon. Uh, like I said, I think it's about two more weeks. Again, like, I just, I just wanted to make sure, like, kind of put this on record as far as exemptions go, that, you know, it, it's, it is gonna be a significant impact, and we're, we're kind of running on the, uh, working on some of the numbers and everything, and again, based off of the numbers that we have had in the past, we have a decent idea of how it's gonna affect us, but again, that doesn't account for the ones that we don't know about that haven't come in filed with us yet still, so, um, again, just want everybody to be aware of that.
So, James, funny you mentioning this, I got an email for, this morning from a guy in Chaparral that's asking the exact same questions you're just talking about. He asked me when we would be able to get somebody from the assessors deal or out of your office to come down and talk about the tax rates and the bills and stuff like that.
Right, yeah, I know we have, we do the, um, we do the, uh, every other month scheduled meetings with, uh, co-quit people out there. Um, I know myself, Ricardo, are planning on trying to go to the next one, 'cause this is around the time that we like starting to let everybody know, like, hey, notice of values are coming out, but, you know, we're willing to try to schedule something outside of those days too, so.
The, this is one on the every other, it's the second Monday of each month at the Betty McKnight Building.
Okay, yeah.
Y'all been there before?
Yeah, sorry, I remember that one.
So, you might, you might, 'cause the next one is just coming Monday.
Okay.
So you might wanna wait till after, or what, you can wait till the next month until after the session's over to kind of know what did pass and what, but it would be great, it would be a lot of help if you could come and talk to those people, 'cause they don't understand anything.
Yeah, no, that's definitely, that's definitely, um, that's definitely something that we're, we're definitely willing to do. We're looking at, like, last year, even like with notice of values and things like that going out, like, last year, we did a radio spot, I just wanted to try to get the word out a little bit more so people are aware to open your notice of values, 'cause a lot of times they don't, and then when tax bills are due, that's when they wanna start asking about the questions. So, last year when we did the radio spot, I think it actually helped our office a little more, 'cause we didn't have as many people coming at the end of the year trying to get adjustments done and things like that, so we're planning on doing the same thing, we like to do as much, uh, you know, public announcing that we can, just to try to help people stay in the loop with everything, but yeah, we can definitely do this, and would it be the same contact person that we did the last time, or is it someone different now?
Uh, I think it could be a different contact, I'll, I'll forward you his, his, his stuff, and then, uh, it, it's Ray, uh, a different Ray than what was before, but it, it's a whole different group running it now, so.
Okay, yeah, no, that'd be great, and like I said, yeah, I, I agree with you, I think it'd be good once we see what actually, when the dust settles, like, what is passed, what's not, and that way we can kind of have a better leg to stand on when we talk to them, so, yeah.
Can I make some copies of this and hand out down there?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, that'll kind of give them a little bit to, to read on.
Right, yes, sir.
Yesterday, a bill passed Senate floor, um, changing the amount of valuation from right now, it is at, uh, one-third?
Yes.
And I know the argument started at like seventy percent, and I think, and I didn't watch it, but I think it ended at forty percent. So, we need to follow that because that's gonna raise everybody's-
Yeah.
Taxes.
Do you remember what bill that was?
No, but, look, it was yesterday on the Senate floor, I do know that, and it did pass.
Yeah, that one would be new to me, because I haven't heard anything changing from the one-third to, um, like I said, I can't tell you how many we've had to go through as an affiliate, but that one I don't recall, but, yeah, if you can give me the information on that one, I'll, I'll check and look into that too, yeah, 'cause that would make some changes too, so.
Okay, and then, um, you know, I've been emailing back and forth about the assessors, um, going around and, and obviously doing their job, but we were told that, um, we, all employees and all elected officials would be purposely assessed?
No, it's not, and again, that's something that is kind of like, again, in my mind, it's, it's the way that it is communicated and/or perceived, so, again, my office, our job is, regardless if you are someone that works in my office or an elected official, my office's job is to, again, if I had the right manpower, if I could, everybody's property would be visited every year, and so anytime that anything new is added to the property, our job and responsibility is to decide if it brings value to your property, and if it does, we add it to the tax roll. Every year, when I go through our evaluation, or what some people might call an audit, we get asked every year, who are, where's your list of elected officials, and then who all works for me in my office? So, I have to make sure that, we double check to make sure that we have everything that's supposed to be on tax roll, uh, for that. Like, even myself, like, when I added, I think I added like two hundred square feet of concrete in my backyard, 'cause I wanted to build a basketball court, I, I disclosed that to my office and I had my appraiser come out and do the valuation, I wasn't gonna do it myself, because I don't wanna value my own property, um, and once it was done, it was approved by someone else, so again, I don't show any type of favoritism. When I built the shed on my property, same exact thing, I had to go and disclose it, I took the pictures for my appraisers, so she didn't have to deal with my dog, and, you know, I was like, hey, here's the pictures, here's the measurements, value it, same thing, she valued it, someone else approved it, so we do that for everybody that works in our office. Um, I have a couple people in my office that have more than two or three properties, and we value every single thing that they own, because again, we can't show any type of favoritism and things like that. I've been told that it's happened in other counties, not our county, I've never heard that, or, um, from my predecessors and things like that, so it's just, it's one of those things where our job is to be fair and consistent across the board, and I think it's one of those things where they just wanna make sure that, hey, like, you know, elected officials, that they're also being properly assessed the way that they're supposed to be too, and that's like, for me, that's why I kind of like, I kind of laugh at it, because I'm like, to me, I don't really care if you're an elected official or not, I'm gonna do your property the same way I would do your next door neighbor, that's not, you know, um, but that's all it basically is. I think there's sometimes too, the thing that's tough about our job for my appraisers, um, we never get to announce when we're coming out, you know, there's sometimes if we know the person, yeah, we can make a phone call and things like that, but a lot of times we don't get that opportunity, so I always tell my people, you know, be careful when you go out there, because there's people that don't want you on their property, but we have to do our job, so, um, I think that makes it a little bit trickier for them too, because we just show up like, oh, hey, I'm here to look at that new thirty by thirty garage you just put up, you know, that we didn't know about, because again, if they don't pull a permit with the state, a lot of people are very capable of doing their own work, if you don't pull a permit with the state, which you normally would do with a contractor, we might not know about that, so that's just extra value that the county is missing out on, where again, coming up to a lot of these exemptions, we're gonna be missing out on taxable value, you know, it's kind of like, we have the responsibility to try to pick up what we can, so, like I said, it, it's a little bit of a confusion thing, because it's the way that it's communicated and also the way that it's perceived, um, which I think going forward, what I'll try to do is, more than likely, I'll, I'll try to like send out a, an email or something like that to whomever, or if I have to send out letters, you know, whatever is the most cost efficient way, I will do it. Um, I know, I know there was a couple properties that I wasn't aware of that we were gonna be checking, 'cause I think I called and left a voicemail with yours, I believe, 'cause I knew that she was gonna go to that one, but I wasn't sure about some of the other ones, so, um-
Didn't get that, have to look back.
Yeah, but, um, but yeah, so we'll, we'll just try to make sure that we're communicating a little bit easier so everybody kind of understands, and then again, I'm always, always, always open to people coming and asking me questions, like, this is a, this is a job that requires education for a lot of people that don't understand what we do, how we do, and when we do it, so I'm perfectly fine with answering whatever we have to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was a matter of, um, trying to avoid paying property taxes for this complaint that I received, I think it was just feeling like there was a target on this elected official's back.
Right.
You know, when, when they called and said, they were told when the assessor, and they also said that there was a state emblem on the door. Um, I don't know if they were confused, the state emblem, not a county emblem, is the state also going behind you and looking at elected officials?
Um, they will, they will look, we will have, um, our bureau chiefs will be coming down to do a physical inspection, not necessarily for elected officials, but what they'll do is they'll say, hey, give me the property record cards for these properties, and they go out and they do their own kind of like appraisal to see how we're doing our stuff, so I wouldn't have seen that happen yet, because he hasn't came by to do the inspection yet, so I wanna say that's like within the next three weeks is when they're supposed to come, um, but yeah, that would be something that I'm not too sure of, like, I don't know what other agencies may be doing, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that was just our, you know, concern, come, and I invited you to my property sometime, you know, I'm just, this is, was the complaint that made it aware that this was even happening, that, you know?
Right, right.
They were specifically told, they're an elected official, therefore they're getting assessed.
Right, yeah, and that's, and again, it's like, it, that's why I feel like, you know, I've even talked to some of my people that have been doing that stuff, and I said like, hey, next time, let's word it like this, so it doesn't feel that way, and they're like, okay, not a problem, you know, again, it's the way that the message is delivered, a lot of times that's how it gets perceived, so it does make you feel a certain way, but, you know, I, we go through training on that kind of stuff all the time, so, you know, we'll be better with that for sure going forward.
James, you got a contact number I can forward this stuff to you?
Uh, yeah, um, so my direct line, five seven five, are you talking about for me?
Yeah, or I can just forward you that guy's phone contacts?
Uh, yeah, send it, send it to, well, you can send it to my, the, the work email, and then you can also send it to, uh, five seven five, uh, four three nine two six five zero.
Two six five zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You can have your job cut out, 'cause if they let these, the veterans stack their benefits and the husband-wife are both veterans.
Yeah, and that's, that's also something that they're kind of looking into, like, how do we combat that, and there's, again, there's a lot of different things and statute that, you know, you can't really avoid, but that's, yeah, that's been on a topic of discussion too, so, it's, it is, it's gonna be, uh, interesting to see how we tackle all this, but, you know, uh, there's greater minds than mine, obviously, that are working hard to help us make sure that we get everything done appropriately, so, yeah.
All right, okay, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you think you'll be, come down this coming Monday, or you're gonna wait a month?
I would probably wait, just because I want, there's just so many moving parts right now, and, you know, the last thing that we'd wanna do is say like, oh, hey, this is exactly what's gonna happen, and then something doesn't pass, or it does, you know, so we, I think the next month would probably be the best, just to kind of make sure everything is-
And I'll tell them, I'll tell them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Okay, and we're gonna try to do these next four items all on the same date, so I'm gonna just read them all off, or do we need to do a separate vote on them and then?
I don't know, we can't, if you, if you make one motion that includes all four, I don't know why you couldn't vote on them that way.
Okay.
And the earliest week in schedule based on timing for paper is the thirty-first of March.
Okay, I think I should be here.
Yeah, you can do them all at once unless there was discussion, I mean, you could even handle the discussion all at once, and you can still put them all in one motion.
Okay, I can do the thirty-first in March, can you guys do that? I mean, we'll-
No thirty-first, says Ms. Commissioner Beck there?
I'm okay on the thirty-first.
Does anything that week work for him?
We will be back to a circular label.
We have a budget meeting on the seventh, we could come back that evening at six?
It's gonna be long, with four different ones, you don't think it's gonna be long?
I hope not. The, um, the ones on the solid waste and, um, and junk vehicles, uh, it's only one section, and it's the penalty section, and it's to address the issue that Matt brought up in his report, where that one case has, has gotten extended another thirty days because, um, the individual charged has, um, drug their feet on getting a, a defense attorney, and then the judge has given them thirty more days. Public defenders will not be an option anymore, uh, once we modify, um, the penalty section and take jail off the table for first and second offenses, um, that way they, they can still have options where if we, we find them and we find them, okay, we're gonna go to the aggravated offense or something, uh, where they, and then jail will be back on the table, but, um, just having a initial offense or first and second offense where, um, only a fine is on the table, we're, we're talking thirty days processing on these, um, and it's, it's just to start getting some type of consequences.
I think, um, we could also make some changes to the ordinance to enforce the state definitions of how many junk cars can be on a property.
We can, um, uh, we can, we can open it again later in the next, you know, in the coming months to, to change other parts. Right now, what, on the motion is just the penalty section, that way we, we get that taken care of, so the code enforcement guys can be showing some consequences, and then we can fix other areas, um, in the coming months.
Do I have to recuse myself on the penalty portion because it pertains to junk cars, or am I allowed to vote on that?
Uh, we'd have to talk through that and see how you were benefiting or if there is a conflict.
On, on that, I wouldn't be, so I was planning, just seeing it on the agenda, I was planning on recusing myself from that, but if it's a penalty, then it seems like I'm okay to vote.
Yeah, all this is doing is, is, is changing the, um, is creating categories of offenses and, uh, establishing different levels of penalties.
Okay, if we just know that, that way I know if I need to or not.
Okay.
The lodger's tax is simply to add language, um, that makes the, um, online, um, brokers such as Air, Airbnb and, um, Furbo, uh, report to us. It's not in our ordinance right now, and they're saying they don't have to, uh, but if it is in the ordinance, then they will.
And the pub, public hearing for the personnel policy is just to address that holiday pay issue, so they're, I don't foresee this lasting very long, even if we have four at one time.
And what day are we closing?
Well, Gerald is out the thirty-first, the fourth, so the next day would be the seventh, we're here that day for a budget hearing, we can do it in the evening at six.
I'm okay with that, six, on the seventh.
On April seventh, I can do that.
All right.
April?
April seventh. It's six o'clock. Okay, so we decided on the date, so evidently we did approve these. Do we need a vote on them separately?
You do need to make a motion if they're on that date.
Okay, all right. I make a motion that we hold a special public meeting on April seventh at six P.M. to, um, modify section nine point one of the personnel policy ordinance, modify the lodger's tax ordinance, modify section fourteen of the junk vehicle ordinance, and modify the violations and penalty section of the solid waste ordinance. Give a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, April seventh. Okay, so I guess we can move on, putting it in his calendar. Did you teach him how to do that?
I'm trying to learn.
Wow, I am impressed.
Now you need to-
Okay, so I guess we can move on, putting it in his calendar. Did you teach him how to do that?
I'm trying to learn.
Wow, I am impressed.
Now you need to share calendar.
I even got county meeting.
Look at you go, wow, way to go. All right, so Commissioner Matherly, you're up.
It seemed like it was just last week we had the last meeting, but anyway, I've been to the grazing meeting. There's a lot of conversation, a lot of talk with the uh, transmission lines, that was a big issue. And, and some of the B L M grazing regs that are coming up. R B, I also saw where I got a notice from a cooperative agency for the B L M is fixing to have another meeting, so I'll. If you, if you don't have that email, I'll send it to you.
I thought they said they were scrapping it, I may have missed it.
I don't know, I, let me open it up and see what all they're saying. Uh, went to the, the dispatch meeting yesterday, it was very interesting. The, the issue with Tularosa, we need to solve that, uh, it's only gonna get worse, I'm afraid. Uh, it's not fair to all the other agencies that are having to cover, so. Went to the Cloudcroft Firewise, there was, if I remember correctly, they said there was about eighty people showed up. I was hoping that gym would be full, but it was uh, we held the people, or they held the people for quite a while till the end. Before they started getting up and walking out, so it was a pretty interesting meeting. Trying to get another meeting set up uh, with, with Dona Anna County on the Chaparral issue. We never got to meet the first time, so now I'm trying to get another one set up. So, as soon as they find out Pamela and R B, I'll let you know, so I sent him an email earlier, so, that's about it.
I'm still writing it down, I don't know what I've done. I guess I could just go through my calendar, go that way, so. I had a Zoom meeting with the newly appointed uh, broadband, I guess organizers. Um, I was able to. Alley my projects and, and introduce what I was trying to do, um, and wrote the letter for um, P V T in support of their grant. I attended the C J C C Zoom meeting, which was a little bit late too, but I did go. I lost my date here, I went to the, I've been testifying on transportation bills um, up in uh, Santa Fe via Zoom and in person. I went to the Christus Health Meeting, um, two hours with a work session. I think it was very good um, to discuss how the hospital can do better outreach for the sources, resources that they're providing now internally and, and all that. I thought it was, I thought it was pretty um, resourceful. I had, went to meetings in Carlsbad and Artesia, there I am, missed that one. I went to a very, very sad funeral, our very dear Mike Cross, that was a tough one. That was a tough one, he's done so much for our community. Let's see, I've been to a lot of Republican meetings, um, went to the fire meeting in Cloudcroft, which my grandson was actually pretty well behaved. I've also resumed my Edge classes, I did two this week. So, I will have my commission certificates completed and three more classes by the midsummer. And then do whatever you have to, have to do that. And then, what is this one? I wasn't able to make the Keep Otero Beautiful meeting, um, and I missed the Art Space event, I was gonna try and go to that one, but I wasn't able to. Um, went to the Friends of N R A banquet, that was one of the largest attended banquets I think we've had in Otero County, so it was good. And I haven't heard how much they've raised, but um, I think uh, that was very successful. And Edge classes, I think that's it, between here and Santa Fe and every place else.
A lot of miles.
Haven't done much.
Yeah, right. Okay, um, I attended the meeting with Spike and Kelly Goss and the Forest Service about their A O I. And Commissioner Matherly was there and R B was there. Attended the Mexico Association of Counties Board meeting in Santa Fe. Attended and helped organize the Firewise meeting in Cloudcroft along with Commissioner Matherly and Barella. And we did have between eighty and a hundred people there. Attended an organizational meeting for the upcoming Commissioner's Affiliate Retreat, once again to be held in Otero County. Attended a New Mexico Executive Board Legislative Meeting, got all the updates on the, the bills, the good and bad and the ugly, a lot of ugly. Attended the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington, D C. And while we were there, we had come up with a resolution on this um, N I D T C. And so, we presented that to three different committees, and I sit on the um, Energy, Environment, Land Use Committee. So, we presented it to them first, and it passed with unanimous vote, nobody voted against it moving forward. And so, then we took it to the Ag Committee, they voted on it unanimously, and then we took it to Public Lands, and they voted unanimously. So, that was a big deal, so I'm, I'm proud of everybody that helped work on that and, and let the voice from New Mexico be heard on that, on that situation. And then I attended another New Mexico Executive Board Legislative Meeting yesterday, so, that's my deal.
Okay, Commissioners, um, as Tom mentioned earlier, he and I spent the day on the mesa with the Bureau of Land Management, looking at the old burrow pits we used to have permits for. To get that back on our radar, and we have that used, we, we need that. Attended with R B, Pablo, others, a Corps of Engineers meeting on the planning assistance. Have scheduled for April third, the first stakeholder meeting with the Corps of Engineers. Participated in the C M A R interviews for the courthouse that we'll be discussing and voting on this afternoon. Um, attended the National Association of Counties Conference in D C. Attended meetings on immigration, federal reform, um, really good discussion from the Southwest border counties on different issues that we all have. Um, had some really good speakers, U S Secretary of Agriculture Rollins, U S Secretary of Veteran Affairs Collins, those are just to name a few of our presenters in meetings. And then yesterday, attended the Taberta meeting, and we are working on the budget, and it was tabled until next week. We all have some more questions, and then I'm working with Julianne to get the board some answers on some things. And then um, we will have an agenda, or a budget, sorry, for you by April seventh, so you can look at that.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, um, as Pamela said, we've, we've been doing quite a bit of stuff together, including the coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers. With that, we're, we're pulling in a lot of stakeholders for that April meeting. So that um, this effort is, is very comprehensive and efficient. We're not um, trying to gather data that already exists, um, so we're not repeating things. So, um, we have um, New, New Mexico Highlands University, they have the Institute of Watershed Restoration, they're on board. We're trying to get New Mexico Tech on board with their hydrology, geology studies, soil and conservation districts involved. Both the Forest Service and B L M are, are on board. And um, and uh, Laura Doth's group, um, and the other guy, I can't think of his name right now, that helps with that program.
Nick?
What's that?
Nick?
Other one.
Tony McWilliams.
Tony, yeah, they'll be there, so, um, really want this to be useful and effective. And uh, and we're incorporating the, the data that Wilson Engineering's already doing for us. And Ben and Twin Forks, um, that way we have that data that we're paying for, might as well get it in there too. And so, um, excited about what, what can come from it, I'm looking forward to that. And then um, uh, lots of participation in the, the legislature. I've testified at two committees against um, H B nine, which is um, the, the one that shut down our processing center. S B two fifty's also out there, and um, I um, I missed that hearing, I was waiting to, to, to speak. And then had something else come up and, and missed the window on that one. Um, I went to Santa Fe on the twenty fifth and testified with agricultural bill that John Block is sponsoring. Actually, John Block, Representative Silva's now co-sponsoring it. Um, and I have a letter that um, seven local farms have signed on to and are supporting. So, testified on that, and waiting for it to be in the next committee. And while I was up there, I participated in the state Ag Board meeting, and, and the cattle growers were there, the dairy, chili, and wine. And sat in on that, um, been working with Pamela and um, and Pablo on federal congressional grants. Trying to uh, get renovation for the weed community center, make it an emergency evacuation center. Uh, medicine and education telehub, and a couple other things, um, so that we can get funding to, to cover that. We were looking at things for Lawless Gate Road, but so far, none of, has not qualified under any of the, the programs that are available. The D C I P grant that we apply for every year, um, any week now, information should be coming out um, on it. And so, we're, we're getting ready for, uh, to try for that one a, again this year. Uh, we've visited the detention center, did a tour, and spoke with um, some folks from um, the risk management, insurance field. About practices that we're currently doing and, and ways to improve. That was where the discussion came about the scanner, and um, you know, at least doing random scans on the employees. And um, that, uh, that's about it.
Got a couple of questions for you, R B, on the, uh, the M O U with the extension office, where are we at on that?
I've not dug into what they've said yet, um, I've received it, but I've not dug into it.
And then, I, I forwarded you a deal from Fort Bliss, and then you sent a deal for R S B P for something?
Yeah, the, the email you sent was for a uh, a meeting to discuss um, issues with the uh, Fort Bliss train, uh, areas of training. And the B L M, and, and included um, uh, lots of various topics, including like uh, invasive um, plants like African rue. And uh, so they're having a, they're having a meeting, and right now, it's scheduled for that date and time that I sent you. And the location is the intersection of five oh six and.
Yeah, Highway fifty-four.
Fifty-four, so, uh, I went ahead and, and gave Pamela, Matt, and Tom, and you notice about it. You know, worst case, we just show up and uh, say, hey, we're here, why didn't you invite us? But ideally, I'll, I'll reach out before and, and see if they're okay with us pulling up a seat at the table. But I think uh, it's a discussion we should be involved in.
Well, we need to, it, it involves our property down there, and, I mean, they're pulling all the ranchers in off the mesa to come to it also, so. I'm trying to figure out exactly, they don't give you any information besides the little agenda item, what this is really about.
Uh, somewhere on there, there was a list of things, and I remember like African rue was number four.
And there is, fire management, surface ownership, map, and, and, but the one that catches my eye is this McGregor Land Withdrawal Extension. What is that about? I mean, the other ones I can figure out pretty easy, but withdrawal, that's the one that, you know, I, I didn't know if you've seen it, but it was. Cuz she said it was Zoom, and I'm like, mm, this address tells me.
You said it was meeting invite, that's why I was confused, I thought it was.
It's combined with the calendars.
Okay, okay.
Okay, uh, I will, I will get additional information and, and, and reach out to the points of contact. And um, let them know we would like to attend, and that we would like additional information on what uh, the purpose of it is.
Okay, cool.
Did we, are we able to look into the dilemma that we are in, in bent with the culverts, the private property culverts, and redoing the roads and all of that?
We, we, we looked at, at some of the maps and um, and we had some discussions and.
Do you wanna go to this? April twenty-third.
Believe we're, we, we have plans to address it, and we're just gonna fix it. And that's part of um, uh, what Wilson is looking at right now. To assess all the things that need fixed, and how they need fixed, and what it will cost. And then, um, depending on what that cost is, we'll apply for, we'll put that as a colonialist grant next year. If we can get to it sooner, cuz we have funding, then, then we will. Uh, and um, if things can be done with that culvert, um, prior to that, Tom and I'll, I'll look at that.
And then, I've been attending that, the Tularosa meetings, they have an independent group that are gonna rebuild Granado Street. And um, that property between Granado Street and the church, and put in a community center and a, and a museum and all of that. I'm trying to push them for becoming a colonialist too, I think it would allow them for.
I think they are, I have a list, but I'm pretty sure they're on it, they, they absolutely should be.
So, they're hesitant because they think that they'll be restricted on what they can do. And I'm pushing for no, they're, it's exactly what they're doing. And I'm not winning the sale, but I didn't know that they were already established colonials.
The com keeps a, a list.
Yeah, I am almost a hundred percent certain that they're already listed.
Here it is, Otero County, Bent, Bolzaker, Chaparral, Cloudcroft, Tularosa, both map one of two and two of two, they, yeah. Tularosa's already in a designated colonialist.
Perfect, you solved all the world's problems, okay, perfect.
Most every one of our communities is designated already.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're missing the window right now, um, I think it was yesterday or something.
Yeah, it was due this week, I believe.
Yeah, so, uh, they'll have to plan for next year, but they absolutely should be taking advantage of that.
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Maybe we'll give them some extra money to pay for our nine one one calls, and uh, some police or something.
That'd be nice, just saying.
So, when can we, when can we get a meeting set up with the Tuli issue?
They are requesting, they're gonna write a letter, sending it to them requesting a meeting, so that's.
Director Barney sent me a draft of the letter this morning.
Okay, from what he talked about yesterday? Well, this is also that issue and his issue.
Do I get to sit in that meeting since it's my district?
It, I guess, it's a Taberta, Taberta Board members are meeting with him to discuss that.
If you could let me know.
Let you know.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it? Okay, I'm gonna take a small break before we go into executive session. Do we need to make a motion to go into executive session first, or does it matter?
It's up to you.
All right, I would do the motion, that way everyone clears out, and we get the video set up.
Okay, all right, I make a motion to hold an executive session under N M S A nineteen seventy-eight ten dash fifteen dash one. To discuss the purchase of, or sale of real property and pending or threatened litigation. Do you have a second?
I second that, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, we're gonna have a roll call.
Commissioner Markhart?
Here.
Commissioner Matherly?
Here.
Commissioner Borelli?
Here.